I'd like to call to order the Maricopa City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, May 7, 2013. We would go ahead and call to adjourn with an invitation is ready for you. Judd, Sergeant Judd, do you mind giving us a prayer, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And we'll be following with a pledge of allegiance. Stand.
Father in heaven, we give thanks for the opportunity to be here today at this council meeting. We're grateful for the council and the mayor and for their dedication and service to our city. We ask a blessing upon them and all of our city leaders and those who work so hard to serve our city that they might be blessed and directed and guided through thy spirit to provide the best and most essential services that they can for this city. We're grateful to be together and to feel a camaraderie as citizens here this day. And ask for blessing upon this meeting, name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks, Senator.
Okay. Without move to the roll call, please.
Here.
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 President.
Here.
Here. Great, thank you. Well, we're moving right on through the agenda here to item three, proclamation, acknowledgements and awards. Just as we get to all this tonight, we have a lot to get to and a lot to celebrate tonight. And so just so you know, after the report from the city manager, we are going to break for a small reception, at which point we'll have cookies and brownies and things in the foyer. But at this time, we're going to move to item 3.1, in which we're going to hear a presentation awarding the city of Maricopa Police Department for the Patriotic Employer Award from the ESGR, the Arizona Committee for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd join us up front here? And I also wanted to call Officer Vandemir up to join us. If you would like to join the mayor in front? And then I want to call Chief Stahl.
Just to give you a heads up on what we're doing here.
We're going to present the Patriotic Employer Award from the Employer Support of the Guard and the Reserve Organization. This is an award recognizing an individual supervisor nominated by an employee serving in the National Guard or the Reserve. And I'm proud to present this award to Maricopa Police Chief Stahl. And we're going to go on here, the award is based on the city and Chief Stahl's commitment to a high level of support shown to our officer Jeff Vandemir. And thank you. Who after joining the Maricopa Police Department was immediately activated to serve the 12-month tour of duty in Fort Bliss, Texas as a member of the United States Army Reserve. Officer Vandemir nominated Chief Stahl for this award prior to being deployed as gratitude to the chief and to the city for assuring him that he would have a job waiting for him when he returned. Chief Stahl, please accept this plaque and award on behalf of the city of Maricopa and Officer Vandemir. And thank you very much. We also have a plaque for Officer Vandemir.
Well, no, no, that's actually for the city.
Oh, but you can hold it.
Yeah, that's for the city police department.
There you go.
I would like also to give the city manager, if I could, have the city manager come up and city council.
There you go.
This is to the city in recognition from the military for being an employer and being supportive of the military in the operations and overseas.
Step forward here.
Stand, stand hand side, stand hand side. There we go. Can we all get in the picture here?
Everybody keep calm. And one more, so Latricia posts this on Twitter.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your service.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Thank you. And we're also going to move on now to the presentation acknowledging the completion of the spring session of the Maricopa Citizens Leadership Academy. Latricia.
Mayor Price and members of the city council, it is my pleasure to introduce 10 of the most excited people in our audience. They are the most recent graduates of the Citizen Leadership Academy. These 10 individuals will join a group of more than 175 residents who have attended the Citizen Leadership Academy. They've given six weeks and had... They've given six weeks of their lives to learn about the inner workings of their local government and had presentations from Mayor Price and city manager Fisher and presentations from the city clerks and city manager's office, as well as community services, development services, economic development, finance and administrative services, fire and the police departments. So we kept them very busy. At the end of the academy, we always like to ask them to rate the program overall so we can always improve on what we do. So I wanted to share some of those comments with you tonight. The participants felt that after attending the academy, they had a better understanding of the budget process, which is very appropriate for tonight's meeting because I'm sure they'll stay for the tentative budget presentation from Tom Dunsing. They found their presenters not only knowledgeable of their subjects, but very charismatic and dedicated to their service. They found the information on our partnerships with our sister communities very informative. They found the presentations regarding what we're doing to attract businesses and develop our communities enlightening and loved the hands-on demonstration provided by our public safety departments. I think they probably left before midnight. Overall, they were very surprised to learn about all the services that are provided by their local government. So without further ado, if I could have the mayor join me. Introducing the Spring 2013 Leadership Academy graduate, starting with Ellen Buddington.
We have a nice certificate for you here, Ellen, and a pen that I'm throwing on the ground. At least I didn't throw this on the ground. Thank you very much. Please stand up here.
One more photo.
Stand up here, be recognized.
Austin Hoops.
Austin, thank you, sir. There you are. Here's your cert. Thank you.
Christopher Labee.
Thank you very much for attending. Appreciate it.
Bob Marsh. Photos by Paul Jefferson. Shelley McLaren. Who attended and said, "President, I'm president, please mark me down."
He's a fan as well.
Thank you.
Scott McDougal.
If not, we'll do it again.
Brett Roberts.
Thank you, Brett. Appreciate it.
Paul Sawyer.
One more.
See what happens if we don't make sure.
Brad and Vandemir.
Thank you so much.
And Ernest Whitehead. And this academy had a special guest who attended all six sessions. And while she does not get a certificate because she wasn't technically registered, we have a special little thank you for her, and that is council member Peggy Chapados. And this is actually her second time attending the academy.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. So now we'll have Paul take the big group shot.
Can you leave us all a lot closer, perhaps?
And if we can have the remaining members of the council, please join us? Because we like that big, tight group shot.
Yeah, right up there. Perfect.
Number two. One, and now we get a little bit closer. And, okay.
Perfect. Congratulations.
And as our closing little commercial, if you weren't available to attend the spring session, we will be having another session in the fall. Registration fills up fast, so once we release it, don't delay, hurry up and sign up. And in the next fiscal year, we will also be offering an advanced leadership academy for all of the 175 people not at the same time to attend. So be on the lookout for information on that as well. Congratulations to all the academy participants, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
As Latricia said, I took this course. I was one of the members of the very first Leadership Academy back in 2008. This class that just graduated was number 12. And sometimes we have waiting lists, but I just want to acknowledge the caliber of people that have gone through this academy. It's mandatory now for our board committee and commission members. We've got some dynamic leaders and some very, very involved citizens. In Maricopa, you should be very proud of the people that have gone through this academy. They are future leaders, they are volunteers, and I'm just proud to be among them. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to move into the report from the mayor. And this is going to be at length, so I apologize ahead of time, but there's a lot going on here in the city. A couple of things here, just in the way of announcements. First, we have a mock car crash. So this is primarily for the youth council in the room. There's a mock car crash going on at the high school at 9:00 a.m. on Friday. And that will be taking place and is sponsored by a variety of different insurance companies and such in the school here in Maricopa. We also have our movies in the park. That will be taking place May 18th, Saturday. That will be at Pecan Park. That will be taking place at about dusk, so approximately 7:30 in the evening. And the movie at this time, on the start of this, will be for the Hotel Transylvania. We also have an update as to our retail shopping survey, which can be taken online. Just so you understand the importance of that retail shopping survey, this is your opportunity to tell the city government one of the things, or many of the things that you would like to see here in the city of Maricopa. One of the things we're always doing as council members is we're constantly meeting with different developers and project coordinators, different industries and restaurants, et cetera, always trying to bring industry and jobs to Maricopa. Now, that obviously does a variety of things, and so this is your opportunity to participate in the process, to have your voice heard. And it really is something that we all look at, and we use this with these potential developers that are looking to bring their business here. If they have, if they know that there's a whole bunch of people here in Maricopa that want to utilize their service, that's very helpful in them making a decision and making a business plan and deciding to take the risk to come here. So it is something that we look forward to you participating in. You can find that online at the Maricopa, Arizona website, and that is www.mericopa-az.gov. Okay? Other announcements, we have on May 30th, at the, let's see, the Maricopa Wells Middle School at 6:00 p.m., the Arizona Corporation Commission is coming out to hear the public comment with the global water rate case. I know it's everybody's favorite thing in the world, but we really do encourage you to be present. We encourage you to tell your neighbors to be present. The record is 1,200 people at one of these town hall meetings. I hope we can shatter that. I hope we can have 5,000 people there. Don't tell the fire chief, sorry. But I'd love to see 5,000 people show up to this and, you know, say their piece, have their voices heard on the record. We are expecting that all five members of the Corporation Commission will be here, so it is a wonderful opportunity to have your voice heard and participate. Wanted to give a quick update on the TPT issue. Most of you know that as the transaction privilege tax. It's undergoing some revisions right now with the governor and the state legislature that is in session. It's something that is really, really important to the city of Maricopa because if, under its original purview, if it had gone through the process as was originally written, it had the potential to take away all construction sales tax. Now, in a growing city, you can imagine that taking away construction sales tax is basically taking away the biggest arrow of our quiver to be able to build roads and provide streetlights and sidewalks and all those different types of things. So it really is a problematic issue. We have been down at the legislature on a regular basis, and in fact, this past week, Councilwoman Gussi and myself, Paul, from the city staff, were able to go and meet with Senators Al Melvin, Senator Al Melvin, and then also our two representatives, Quasman and Steve Smith. And we were able to tell them about the progress that's being made on the bill. Just so you know, there were about seven, well, 10 things really, that we were out of sorts with. We've negotiated on seven of them and quickly came to resolution with the governor's office on those. Three of them were outstanding, one being auditing, one being a point of sale or portal usage, and the other being the construction sales tax. On the other two, we've worked down very heavily and gotten to some negotiations, and it's been a great, a great experience. The last one we have is on the auditing portion. This is changing every day, and there's only a few weeks left in the session. And so it's something that I think you should be aware of, you should be able to contact your representatives and senators and tell them to focus on not taking away from their cities that they need so badly because, you know, the last time I checked, every single one of them lives in a city or town. And so it's, it really is something that's absolutely important to us. And so do your part as we do ours to make sure that we get the very best bill we possibly can on that. So that's where we are in progress with that. And things are looking up. There is a league meeting here on Friday about this, so things are, things are coming along. Finally, I'd like to do a slight variance here in the report from the mayor. Have a presentation to make that's really kind of in the way of announcement. And I would like the Maricopa Unified School District, their board superintendent, also the Ochkin community to come forward and stand with me on the podium, if you would. And then council, would you join me as well? So one of the things that, that people always ask is, how are we working together? It is true that we have separate and independent governments. So we have the city of Maricopa, we have our Ochkin tribal neighbors, and we have the Maricopa Unified School District. Well, one of the things we've been working on for some time is that I think that each of us believes that relationships matter. And so one of the things that we've been in discussions with Ochkin is how to better the surrounding community. I think that you've seen their commitment to the community in the way that they have recently taken very, very gigantic risks so that the benefit of all of us who live in this area, we'd have more things to do with their multi-tainment complex, with the many ways in which they're generous. They've taken one more step and been extra generous again tonight. And so I wanted to announce that after some time and after their kind generosity, they have made an offer to the Maricopa Unified School District of $2.6 million. I first wanted to turn some time over to the superintendent Chestnut, and then also to Tori Anderson, who is the board president, back here in the back, and then turn some time over to councilman, excuse me, sorry, our tribal chairman, Chairman Manuel.
You don't sound fair. Hold on, breaks. Sorry. Hello, hello?
Just yell.
But that's okay. We're very excited about this generous gift.
Wait, hold on, Doc. You want to get this on tape. Try this one.
As you can imagine, we're very excited about this generous gift from the Ochkin community. We've had the opportunity to meet with Chairman Manuel and Vice Chairman Anton and discuss this issue on a few different occasions, and we just greatly appreciate their willingness to reinvest in the school district. They have made a very similar gift in previous years, and we are looking forward to making very good use of those funds in the next few years, and we greatly appreciate this wonderful generous gift.
Thank you.
Thank you for your generosity, mostly for believing in us. As alumni of Maricopa, we know what Maricopa Unified meant to us as a safe haven and a place for us to go and to bloom and to who we are today. So from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for being a partner in our future and creating a fantastic Maricopa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just following up with that, I'd just like to, I think I bought me a couple more minutes.
This is the guy who doesn't like the spotlight, are you serious?
This is only a tally because the funding prior to was a 12% funding that was a grant. This is funding that is coming directly from our community. This is a funding that drives the resources and development in our community that we are sharing with the city of Maricopa. So this is our money in the community that our membership are putting forward. And it is short, it's not long. The Ochkin community with a current membership of 947 and a land base just over 22,000 acres has continually been on the existence of adapting. In this, we farm 15,000 acres, and we are known as a farming community. In this time of economic concerns, we are also conscious of the population explosion to the city of Maricopa. We too are impacted. We are also, as, also a government within our own and with our prior leadership to current, we are determined to gain self-sufficiency and sustainability for continued progress. We are also mindful of the concerns of education, one which befalls Native American students on a more significant note to Ochkin. We will work to build a school in our community, and we will also need to create a partnership with our neighboring community. With this, we also need to encourage and create partnership participation from our communities. As true leaders to those our youth look to for guidance, we need to invest in them to promote and partake in a future yet to be determined, but with the belief of opportunities. The dedication and personal determination of our teachers to encourage, to educate success within our students goes beyond expectations. The day in and day out of self-motivation needless to address expectations with fewer resources is commendable. We value the leadership and open communication of Superintendent Dr. Chestnut and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Connolly in the vision and plan of creating a strong education system for the city of Maricopa. The Ochkin community is investing into a partnership with the Maricopa Unified School District, the dollars to assist with the shortfall within the budget and the failure to of the previous tax initiative. The Ochkin community believes a partnership goes beyond boundaries and creates a lasting relationship to forge a strong future for everyone. That is exemplary of the board in itself, President Anderson and the board members. So we are very fortunate to be a participant and a partner in this endeavor, and we are supporting of you throughout the future to come. Thank you.
Don't you just hate it when you have to speak after the chairman? He steals the limelight all the way around. But I guess for me is, you know, when we look at it, both the city of Maricopa and the community, we share a lot, and we share all these schools together with our, with our children. So in order for us to give a good education to our kids, and we do hold education as a priority within the community, it's that we have to help fund this and share the load of what's happening in the city of Maricopa and to the school district. So with that, and like the chairman said, you know, it's just something that we've always believed in, and the 12% was just something that last year's was, it was a grant, but this time is community money going toward the school district. So in that, you know, I hope we do share a lot, and for me is just that all our students need that, this education that we're coming into, and it's causing problems within our community, and we all need to get together to help everybody out, and the children do deserve a good education. Thank you.
Well, as the other two council people have stated, you know, I just make it short and sweet because they always tell me, "Don't talk too much, don't say nothing." But, you know, they say that I might say the wrong thing, I might expose something, but I'm not, I'm just joking all the way around, I'm just the way I am. But, you know, I'm always ribbing Mayor Eddie Farrell here when he was the mayor, and I keep bringing that up when it was Mayberry then. And then now it's not so. But, you know, amongst, between all that and all the development that's going on, it's so on, you know, it's the same with the development of our youth to attain their futures, like, you know, be, whether we all here in the audience or that are in your positions as leaders and whatever, there will be, you will be, we are the, you are the role models, so to speak. In my lifetime, you know, I've seen a lot here, and I've seen it up to here, and I'm not, I'm not ready to quit. I'm ready to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you again to our tribal neighbors. That gift is just unbelievable, and, you know, I know that I just speak on behalf of the city of Maricopa and on behalf of Maricopa Unified, that it's invaluable, and, you know, the words are hard to find, so thank you very much. As though that wasn't enough, the city gets to participate with this, with the MUSD and the tribe in this, and so we look forward to working on some of the details on how this moves forward. But as I said, you know, relationships are everything, and I think that one of the things that I have learned from them, especially from Chairman Manuel, is that what it is to have foresight and to have vision for the future and to understand, one of the things he likes to say is that we're just a line apart, and we're really neighbors, we're one and the same, and we have to understand that. As you know, the city of Maricopa this year... As you know, the City of Maricopa this year is doing a lot, and we have a lot of things going on, and one of those things that's going to be coming online here in the future is our Copper Sky recreational complex. And as you know, with that park, it's 140 acres, and, you know, we have an aquatic center and a multi-generational center, and it's just an astounding feat to see this come about. And it's one thing to get the bonds, to pay for it, to build it, but then you have to run it, you have to operate it, and that's something that's never been in our budget before. And, you know, I got to tell you, as an elected official, I'm a little worried about that because where do you, where do you come up with that? And I got to tell you that in the relationships that we're building, I'm finding that things aren't always as doom and gloom as they need to be. And so, I wanted to announce to you tonight that, as I said before, as if it wasn't enough, the Ochkin has graciously offered $7.4 million to the City of Maricopa. As the Chairman said before, something really important to understand here is that this is not the 12% gaming money that is required by, via the compact. This is their own personal investment, and they are making an investment in the City of Maricopa and in its success in the running and operation of this center moving forward. And there's always details to be worked out, and the councils have to get together and work those things out as we move forward, as we have decisions still to make. But I hope you understand, this is what a partnership means, and I believe that the Ochkin Tribal Council understands this, and I appreciate that, and I thank you for that leadership, and I thank you for that as we move forward. So, again, many applause, many thank yous, and I'll pass the mic back over to the Chairman. Thank you.
I will buy me a couple more minutes. Thank you, it's not that long, it's really. Again, the Ochkin Indian community with a current membership of 947 and a land base just over 22,000 acres has continually been on the existence of adapting. In this, we farm 15,000 acres, and we are known as a farming community. In this time of economic concerns, we are also conscious of the population explosion in the City of Maricopa. We too are impacted, but we are also a government within our own and with prior leadership and to current, we are determined to gain self-sufficiency and sustainability for continued progress. We have been diligent to address the factors of our economic downturn. As our own government, we have been on a progressive and addressing, been progressive in addressing our infrastructure and creating service and employment for our community and surrounding communities. The Ochkin Indian community in our goal to create self-sufficiency and sustainability understands the impacts from our own perspective. We also see the expectations and goals mirrored by that of the City of Maricopa. To build a cohesive community, you need involvement and participation, and you also need to be aware of who you are, who your neighbors are. The Ochkin Indian community in its own nation, we have our own government, and we strive towards self-governance. The Ochkin Indian community is also aware of our lifelong relationship with Maricopa. We shared in one another's growth and helped when called upon. We grew and prospered for the simple reason of it was the right thing to do. As it is today, even though with the radical growth of the residents of City of Maricopa, we are still neighbors. We cannot move out of our community nor would we want to. We love it here, we can build on it with a true partnership, and the common term of neighbors addressing our economy in our Ochkin Indian community, we would like to invest in a partnership with City of Maricopa. Thank you.
Again, he has to read it. I'd like to go ahead and step back a little bit and say good evening to the Mayor and to the Council, and to the City of Maricopa, and to the youth. I think we've said enough about sharing and partnership here, and money's not the whole thing. I think we're investing in something good here for the long haul, and Chairman has mentioned as, we're not going anywhere. We're here, we live here, so we might as well invest in you and help you along because it's hard being a new community. And for us to share our experience with Maricopa and helping you guys along is something from, we believe in our heart that is going to work, and Mayor Price is going to hang if it doesn't work. But we'll make it work, we'll make it work, and it's going to be, it's something that we're looking forward to because, you know, like we said, we both share this place, and Western Penobaccon belongs to the City of Maricopa and the Ochkin Indian community. Thank you.
Well, you know, enough has been said about all this, but, you know, I'd just say, congratulate all of you for sticking to it and attending, trying to attain your goals as far as the growth that you've, that's come upon you, and we applaud you as, you know, as a new community, a new city, new everything, new people, new faces. Actually, it's a new culture, it's a cultural shock in a sense, but it's good, and I like that. Thank you.
So, with that, again, just to, you know, reiterate it again, enough's been said, but thank you very much, and on behalf of the City of Maricopa and the Maricopa Unified School District, I really can't say enough, it's not about the money, but it is about absolutely what it means to work together, to create partnerships, and to understand that we're all here together, we might as well grow together and learn how to get along really well. So, thank you very much, appreciate you coming tonight, thank you.
Well, I have more good news to share with the Mayor and Council and the public. I'd like to ask our Finance Director to please go on up to the podium. We have received an award at the city, and he will present that to us, and then following that, I have yet another very exciting announcement to make.
Thank you, City Manager. I'd like to invite Latricia Woods and Kimberly Mike Sell, please. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pleasure to be here. Tonight, I'm very happy to announce that we are the recipient of the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Let me, let me read just a, just a couple of sentences out of this award because this is very, very important, and I think the Mayor can attest, this was very important when we went to our bond rating agencies. This was a high-profile thing for us to apply for and accept the award. Basically, what it says is, "The award reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. In order to receive the reward, the entity had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation." What this award shows is City of Maricopa's proficiency in a policy document, a financial plan, which is very important to the rating agencies, an operations guide, and a communications device. And I can tell you, this award is not possible, first off, with the support of the Mayor and Council. Secondly, wherever my staff is, this award is also not possible with the hard work and dedication of Ms. Mike Sell and Ms. Woods. They put countless days, hours, weeks into this project. They kept me going on this project. This is my first budget document, and I really owe them a great deal of gratitude. So, with that, I'd like to present this beautiful, possibly, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And Mr. Mayor, if it pleases you, if I could come down and have you take a photo as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, I feel like an infomercial, but wait, there's more. I am so excited to announce, and I'm going to ask Rocky Brown to step up to the podium while I'm making this announcement, that for the first time, the City of Maricopa has been designated as a Playful City, USA. And before Mr. Brown begins his presentation, on behalf of the Community Services Director, Jennifer Campbell, who is vacationing somewhere, very sunny right now, which was planned months ahead of time, she's very disappointed that she's here, so she's asked Rocky to tell you a little bit about it. This has been something that our Youth Council has championed, which was very appropriate, so I'll turn it over to Rocky to give you the details.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Council. Congratulations on being elected officials for the newest Playful City, USA. The announcement was made official today. I'm here just to kind of explain what exactly that is and what the, what the benefits are. First of all, the project was presented by Kaboom, which is a national nonprofit foundation that has a vision of having a place to play within walking distance of every child in America. That's their mission and their goal. So, they set out to, they set out to recognize communities that support play, and they aim to create a network of innovative recreation programs. With that, each city that applies is asked to tell them what they're doing in terms of new programming. The one we highlighted was our Maricopa Emotion Program, which is our city's mobile recreation unit that we take out to the local school district and charter schools to kind of show our ability to work together and partner up on things. Obviously, this is a great recognition for the city. The process of this, like we said, the Youth Council and the members of our Parks, Rec, and Library Committee all had to perform an audit of our current parks and green spaces. Now, those aren't just city parks, those are all of our community parks. So, they literally had to go through every subdivision in the neighborhood, take pictures of all these green spaces, and create a map. There's also an application process. What that is, is we had to go out, we had to find out all the things that our city does to support play, go into our city code, what our school districts do to support recess and fitness, nutritional guidelines, things like that. Our city has a great foundation of those things, and it's been very supportive of play and recreation from the outset. Another thing we did is we got letter support. So, thank you to Mayor Price, he provided a letter, Councilmember Chapados, and also members of our Parks, Rec, and Library Committee. They all provided very nice letters that helped solidify our application and get us recognized. Finally, we had to go take pictures of people at play. I mean, these applications are a lot of words, and you got to spice them up with pictures, and thankfully, our community has a lot of groups and activities, and we went out there and took pictures of people and livened up the presentation. Now, the benefits, the good things, the things that we're excited about. We obviously, we get national recognition. There is a press release today that recognizes us as the newest playful city. It goes out through the Kaboom Foundation nationwide, it's on Twitter, it's on Facebook, and it'll also be in the next edition of Governing Magazine. It will make only playful city appointed cities are eligible for certain grants. Those grants are very nice, they're, the first one is $20,000 to go towards the construction of a new playground. So, now we're in part of a special pool that is eligible for that grant, and there's another grant also that's a joint-use grant. It's $15,000 to open up playgrounds that weren't necessarily open to the community before, that can help open them, maybe if they're at a school or a private park, things like that. They have an offer of $15,000 to help us open that up for everybody. Community notoriety, this is something that chambers of commerce, local businesses, realtors, they use to kind of highlight the city and what we do and what we offer. And finally, you see there's a sign up there, we'll get two highway road signs, so when people come in in Maricopa, they'll know that we're a playful city, and we support recreation, we support our youth, we support people of all ages, and we encourage people to be active. So, it'll be a very nice thing to drive in and see every day. Finally, we'd just like to celebrate by saying, "Let's play." We want to invite up the members of our Parks, Rec, and Library Committee and our Youth Council, and also our Mayor and Council, we have some things to celebrate and show just how playful we are, so.
What's this? Here, take the other one of these. All right, yeah, here we go. Isn't that the best thing about money? Up with those bad boys, I'll blow them. See, gotta come up. Oh, yes, I'll wait till. Come on, come on, come on. I'll bring it over here, we'll get trouble.
Everybody have the kind of three, say playful city.
Playful city. Yay. Better than a baseball game.
Now get the pride of my kids.
Yeah, take it back.
One more, one more.
Come on, one more, one more. Sorry. Okay, now two now. Yeah, two. Three strikes against me. We're going from three to nine. All right. Thanks very much. Thanks guys, we did it. We did it. Appreciate it. Thanks for all you guys doing, we love it. We did it. So, thank you so much. I can't keep that thing in there.
It's crazy.
Okay, we haven't had enough fun yet. Oh, we're going to move to a quick statement here by Councilman Brown.
Mr. Mayor, colleagues, I just want to let people know that who are not aware, Playful City recognition is a marvelous recognition. Kaboom is a great organization. I had the pleasure of 2009 going to Orlando, Florida with the ex-Community Service Director to build two parks. So, they really make you work in building parks, and just, it's a lot of fun seeing the kids involved, they feed you well, it's refreshments. The Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Orlando came, the Vice Mayor came to recognize us. for the city of Orlando came, the vice mayor came to recognize us. So this honor is really something special, and I'm very proud of our city.
Thank you very much. Well, with that, we're going to take a quick 15-minute recess and enjoy some cookies and brownies in the foyer there. Well, it'll probably end up being longer, you know. Sticking around, we're back to our regular, fun and exciting city council meetings, and we're back to the part of the agenda in which we are going to do the call to the public. So if anyone would like to approach the council this time, you may do so. Oh, okay. Go ahead, Brenda.
Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Farrell, and council members, it's been an exciting evening, and I want to continue the excitement and bring you up to date on the plans for Maricopa's Independence Celebration. So we are busy planning for the 8th Annual Great American Barbecue, and that is going to be held at Pecana Park on July 4th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, or 6:00 to 10:00 PM, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut it short. But we are busy now. We have, Ruben is supposed to, there you go. On our, we have a new page on our community website that kind of tells a little bit about the Great American Barbecue, and right now we're accepting vendor applications, so food vendors, business vendors, and our nonprofits who want to participate in this. We have our, there's an interest form where you can go in and submit your information, and you'll immediately receive an information packet that will have all of the event details for participating in the event. Also, we have a sponsorship package that we are rolling out, so all of you business organizations that want to partner with the city and present this to our community, we have a lot of different sponsorship levels, and so we're excited to announce that. As far as the event itself, I'll fill you in on a few details. We're going to start the evening off with a local DJ, and then at 7:00, we have a kind of a rock band that is well-known in the valley. They are Shallow Water, so they will be kicking it up, and while we're getting ready for the other activities that will go on, it's hot in July, so we're going to have water slides and other festivities, and then, of course, we'll end the evening with the lighting of the sky and the fireworks. So we're excited about all of these things, and when we come back here in a couple of weeks, we're going to also show you, we've been working with our wonderful marketing team, they are very talented, and Ruben, do you want to give them a sneak preview? Yes. We have our, we will have our first event-driven website that our community members can go to and find out all of the specifics about the event, where to park, where to catch a shuttle, what the entertainment lineup is. So we're really excited, and like I said, we'll be back in two weeks with more information, and we'll continue for all of the council meetings up until the event to share information because we want to make sure that everyone joins us at Pecana Park on July 4th, so save that date, and we will see you then.
Thank you very much, Brenda. Did you have anything to say? Sir? No? Okay, sorry. Just making sure. Okay. Moving right along here. He said earlier, he was on his way up. But if anyone else would like to be called out of the audience, raise your hand.
I got a buddy, Jay Little's gonna come out somewhere.
Come on, you've got to liven these things up. We can't take this too seriously. All right, moving on. No more call to the public. Thank you very much. Onto the minutes. We have a 7.1, 7.2. Councilwoman Chapados, did you have something on this one?
Yeah, actually, on 7.2, on the regular minutes, there was a motion that I made on the lockup funding, just needed to have a tweet just a little bit more. Part of my motion was that you need the amount at $200,000, and so the amendment was made, that was left out.
Okay, so do these minutes need to be approved as amended then? Okay. So we need a motion to approve as amended. So we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. No public hearings at this time. Moving on to consent agenda. We have obviously one item that has been pulled from consent, but other than that, motion to approve consent. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Great, moving on to then item 9.15, which is the possibly taking the action to award every full-time employee an outstanding organizational performance award on our regular agenda. Who's presenting that? Karen, Tom? And I know we have questions, so we'll just kind of give a brief synopsis here, and we'll turn it over to Councilwoman Chapados.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is incredible because our employees are outstanding, and what we have asked is that we give an organizational performance award to all of our employees. This would be payable in the last paycheck of May, and I will entertain any questions at this point.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Karen. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Dunzing, Ms. Schaefer, Brenda Fisher, Chief Stahl, Chief Brannon, all the people that are involved with the unions for police and fire, and all the people that helped in negotiations. The fact that we've got some amazing people here with some amazing talents that continue to do everything and more that we ask of them without us being able to give them the compensation and some of the other perks that we would like to see them have, I want to applaud your foresight and your creativity with coming up with this option. My question is, with the $250,000, how is that, is that a net $250,000? How does that work?
That is based on the amount starting at $250,000, and then all applicable sales tax, I'm sorry, sales tax, payroll taxes, retirement, et cetera, being taken out of that. There is a little bit of a caveat because there is a difference between the retirement systems, where one retirement system does not deduct an amount for retirement, and one of the other retirement systems do. The public safety retirement system does not deduct retirement from that.
So for this to be approved as it's written, we would start with the $250,000, and then whatever withholdings, per employee's withholdings rate would be taken out, and then they would get the check for the remainder?
Yes, based on their individual withholdings, and I would suggest maybe they do something for this particular check. Is that on camera? So that, so that perhaps they get a little bit more than they would normally get if they left their withholdings at the amount that they've been carrying.
Okay. So the amount that is requested for transfers is $65,000, and maybe this is a question for Tom. Tom, what would be the difference if we did do it so it netted out at $250,000?
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. Councilmember, if we netted it down for the $250,000, it would be approximately $110,000, going from $65,000 to $110,000. And I would like to clarify the taxes. This is a supplemental pay, so unfortunately, any changes made to withholdings would not be reflected in this pay. Just a little clarification on that.
Thank you. This is tough because we've just gone through a very, very intensive budget process, and that's actually the last item on our agenda tonight is to approve the preliminary budget, and that sets our ceiling. It's not a question for me of whether or not these guys and gals deserve this. Unequivocally, they do. I just think, given that the budget position that we're in right now, we still have some big unknowns hanging out there, I would support the $65,000. I'm not sure I'm really comfortable at this point in time almost doubling that. I'm hoping that maybe a year from now, if things improve, we can come back and relook at something like this, maybe do something a little bit different, but that's, it's almost doubling what we're asking for. And like I said, it's not a question of whether or not they deserve it, they most definitely do, every employee here. For me, it's just a matter of some of the other things that we're facing with this next budget year, coupled with some of the unknowns, it's a lot of money.
Any other questions?
Counsel, any other questions, concerns, thoughts? Vice Mayor?
I'm just a little confused here. Councilmember Chapados, help me out. It's a genocide for $65,000. Where did this $110,000 come from?
It's my understanding if we wanted to amend this and say rather than them each ending up, starting at $250,000, they end up with $250,000 net, we would have to build in the difference to compensate for the withholdings and the different levels. Is that close to being right, Tom?
Yes, that's exactly right.
So Vice Mayor, is your question then concerning the fact that the agenda's is $65,000 and...
Yeah, and I thought that's what we were here to approve the night is $65,000. Where did the $110,000 even come from?
Right, it's just clarifying the, is this $250,000 net, or is this $250 gross?
And I think we clarified that.
So that's, yeah, that's what we have to determine here. So if we want to pass it as agendized, then we'll make that motion. So any other questions or concerns on it? If not, then, what's that, we'll take a motion then?
Yes, I'm very, very glad to approve, and I want a motion that we accept as written, and approve this $250,000, plus the floating holiday that we never talked about, and that's money in the bank, let's, let me tell you. Just one extra day a year, yeah, that's priceless. So I move to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all of you that worked so hard. Item 10.1, the mayor and city councils are discussed and possibly take action to approve the memorandum of understanding with the professional firefighters of Maricopa, IAFF Local 4561.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, this has been quite a night, and for me, this is very exciting. First of all, I want to acknowledge all of the public safety employees who are here and who are not here tonight. I know we have Sergeant Turner in the background, we have Officer De Oreo from New Jersey, is it New Jersey? Detective Dennison, and of course, we have Officer Justin Thornton, we have Sergeant Judd in the audience, we have one of our most favorite people in the whole world, even though he moved up where it's cooler, Mr. Dan Ashton. And so I just want to applaud them, and I want to applaud all of the staff of the city of Maricopa because we have a great team. So if you could just give them a little shout out with you. It is my pleasure to bring to you three MOUs, one from the professional firefighters of the city of Maricopa, they are IAFF Local 4561, and I'm going to ask Mr. Dan Ashton to join the mayor on the podium for the signing of the MOU.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Second?
That's a good idea. We probably should do that before we sign it.
We should do that first.
Told you, this is a great night, isn't it? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Dan Ashton is the president of this association, and I might add, this has been a wonderful, professional, and cooperative experience, and I thank him and his team and our negotiation team, and I don't think we have a better spirit of cooperation anywhere in the United States on this thing, so.
Perfect, we got a few of them. Yes, we need to do it in triplicate.
Okay, hold on. Okay, now I see.
Awesome, I'm gonna steal it from you here. Last but not least, geezer. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I'm going to, are you taking pictures? Okay. Afterwards, we're going to invite Dan to say a few words, even though he told me he didn't want to. I didn't say that. Give him his notes. Teamwork, teamwork. Playful. Say, MOU.
All right. Okay, on to the next item.
Mayor?
Yes.
We do want to say something.
Oh, absolutely.
Last year, or two years ago, if you remember, I had to follow Justin. Justin was in a suit, tie, had something prepared. I didn't. I thought, I'm gonna be prepared this time. Last year, I had Wranglers on. At least I dusted my boots off, but, you know, changed. So I've got something prepared this time.
Excellent.
All right. On behalf of all the members of Local 4561, we want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This opportunity to sign our fourth MOU with council was exciting, as we have a great respect for this relationship and your understanding. As we continue to move forward with this relationship and progress, the confidence only grows as we learn to work together for the betterment of our citizens and our city. We would like to give credit to our city manager, Ms. Brenda Fisher, for her honesty and trust she has shown and continues to show as our city manager. We would also like to recognize our director of HR, Ms. Karen Schaefer, and her team. Chief Brannon. Tom, I cannot say your last name. Tom? And Tina, and I can't say that last name either. I guess I wasn't as prepared as I thought. For an outstanding experience during these negotiations, Mrs. Schaefer, again, we want to thank you personally for keeping them fair and upbeat. We enjoyed it. We enjoyed it. You have no idea. Thank you so much. Okay, Justin, follow that. And he will.
Thank you, Dan.
Now, moving on, we'd like to introduce and ask you to consider approving the MOU for the Maricopa Sergeants Council, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 78. Representing them will be Mr. Stephen Judd.
I'm afraid to open the microphone for Judd, but, you know. I'm just kidding.
This is a part of the negotiating team, Sergeant Mary Turner. Excited to have her here. She's a little more quiet than I'm used to having, but she was there.
Great. I know that we've had the opportunity to review the MOU and we're, I don't want to speak for Counsel, but I think that we're all very happy with it. So with that, I entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we're gonna ask Mr. Judd and Chief Stahl to join you at the dais.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much for all your work on this.
Awesome. Perfect.
Congratulations.
Might as well stick around, Chief.
Do I have to say something to you?
If you like. Thank you very much. We have some very outstanding men and women on the street. This MOU represents the Officers' Council for the Maricopa Police Department. This is for the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 78. And representing them is their president and K-9 handler. And I'm a little disappointed he didn't bring Casper, but Justin Thornton. We've had a lot of help from Officer DeOrio. And I can't tell you how much help Michael Dennison, Officer Michael Dennison, gave us in kind of a very, very special way. But we're asking that you approve this MOU.
Any questions, Counsel? Concerns? Again, we've had the opportunity to review it extensively, and I think it's, it's a great, great opportunity for everybody involved, so. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we're gonna ask Justin and Police Chief to join the mayor.
Great.
For the signing. And all your friends who want to go with.
Took the mic off. Good to see you. Good so much. I don't think they believe us when we do it the first time. That's right. We're changing it up.
Awesome. Congratulations. Great job.
Thank you. I just want to end this again with, this has been a very cooperative experience and very professional. And I'd like to thank everyone involved, including the City Attorney's Office, the
Perfect. Before moving on to the next item, I just really wanted to say thanks to all the organizations for the MOUs that we just did. For the average person who doesn't get a chance to see this, this is a really big deal. And there's a lot of negotiations that go on back and forth. And it's tough. It's a, it's a tough decision. And, you know, Counsel wants to be able to provide for our public safety as, as absolute best as, as possible, and at the same time to the city staff. And so, you know, we have to find a, a nice, careful balancing act there. And I really wanted to thank the organizations that, that took the time to realize the, the constraints and yet the creativity for all involved on trying to find ways to think outside the box and find measured steps that would actually be big steps in the future moving forward. And so I really appreciate the flexibility and, and thank you greatly for all of your help in doing this. And I hope we have a long and successful history together. So thank you again. Okay. Well, with that, let's move on to item 13, excuse me, 10.4, miscellaneous 13 dash 33. We're gonna hear a presentation discuss the possibility to take action on the acceptance of the results of the 2013 Household Labor Survey as completed by Elliott D. Pollak and Company.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. In keeping with the positive theme of tonight, I would like to introduce the 2013 Maricopa Labor Survey. Availability of skilled workforce is consistently one of the leading site selection factors for businesses who are evaluating new destinations for investment. Recognizing that, staff initiated the 2013 City of Maricopa Labor Study to identify trends and updates within our workforce population. Elliott D. Pollak and Company was contracted to perform the survey, analyze the data, and prepare a statistically valid summary report. The importance of this report really cannot be understated from an economic development perspective. Labor is critical. It drives site location decisions. So having this report is a valuable tool when we proactively go out and recruit business to Maricopa. We make this document available to local businesses, our regional partners, and we also share it with site selectors around the country to let them know what an outstanding labor force we have here in Maricopa. So with that, I'd like to introduce Jim Brown, Senior Vice President with Elliott D. Pollak and Company.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Counsel, this is by far the most interesting and entertaining Counsel meeting I've ever presented at. It's, it's almost, it's almost sad to have an economist come up towards the end. But the, the information is very positive. And just to start off with a really, really quick story, a few years back, there was a really negative article in a nationwide publication talking basically about the highway to urban sprawl and Maricopa being the poster child. And we, I go very far back with your staff. You have outstanding staff. I've been working closely with the Economic Development Staff for some time. And they approached us to take a look, just do a real quick analysis of the, the housing market here. And I thought, how, go ahead.
Just real quick, I recall a, a few quotes from that national article from a resident from Maricopa.
I am assuming that there were maybe only one or two curse words then that were included as the quote. So, so we took a look at, at the, the conditions in the real estate market. And initially, I thought, how am I gonna polish this? Because this is one of those things where it's gonna be negative. I'm gonna lose a happy hour friend over this. It's almost not worthwhile. And it ended up showing that the city was in similar shape to other communities, you know, periphery communities. In fact, in some cases, it was even in better shape. All right, so then go forward to 2009, 2010, when we came in and we did an update on the, the labor conditions. And I thought, well, this is pretty interesting that we were taking a look at the economic configuration of the city. I thought, how positive could it be? Because there was interest in trying to promote the town. And your staff already knew what we ended up finding out. So it was a very pleasant surprise again. Very highly skilled workers in this area. In fact, it's probably your number one economic development attribute when you're going out there and marketing for new businesses. But again, it's only one of a number of tools that you need. It has to be part of a package. This update, there was some debate on whether or not coming in at, we're well out of the recession, but we're still in a little bit of a downturn. Whether or not the economic statistics, we're still gonna be showing what we are hoping for. Is it still gonna be a good marketing tool? And they even strengthen in some situations. So Maricopa continues to surprise me, from the economic data to the real estate conditions to the beach balls flying around the Counsel meeting. It's fascinating. So I'll go through this quickly because you have all the other, you have the data in front of you. So this is gonna be one of the best economic development assets. But, but please keep in mind, you already have the outstanding staff. And I've worked with many communities throughout Arizona, and, and that's an attribute that not everybody has. You have a solid workforce. You're going in the right direction. So let's see if we can keep that going forward. Relatively large percentage of residents in high-wage jobs between 50 and 100,000. A lot of individuals disproportionate in number of individuals with bachelors or graduate-level degrees. And a lot of the residents work in high-value-added areas. And this is gonna be very easy stuff to convey to businesses wanting to locate or to help facilitate some of the coordination, to grow some businesses from within. This is all just fundamental to economic development. Some other key points, and this is what we found the last time around as well, for the most part, is that people, of course, would like to work closer to home. And this is something that you have to work on. You can't change your base economy overnight, but you have to put in these efforts year over year in order to do that. And that applies at the city level, the county level, and also at the state level. Eighty-five percent would take a similar job closer to home. Forty-four percent would change careers. Think about that. That's amazing. Actually, consider changing their careers, changing the path of their, their livelihood going forward to be closer to home at this point. And there's one slide that looks like it's not important, and it's one of the most important ones, and I'll point that out in a few minutes. And I think this explains why. Ninety-seven percent favor employer recruitment, so basically saying they're backing you on the economic development efforts. We took a look, there was a random selection of 5,000 addresses. The, the surveys were mailed out in the water bills. Talking statistics speak, the, the survey results are at the 95% confidence level, so you're about 95% sure that the survey results reflect the community as a whole, basically. The first one, if you take a look, this takes a look at households, and Maricopa is the blue line. And the best part is that the blue line is bigger once you get into the higher household incomes. Fifty to 75,000, 75,000 to 100,000, this is where the city starts to be much improved compared to where it was several years ago, but also performing better than Pinal County, but also Maricopa County as a whole. And, and to be honest, quite, quite a bit better than a lot of the other cities throughout the greater Phoenix area. Here's the breakdown of where the head of household, their educational attainment, graduate degree or doctorate, 20%, bachelor's, 26%, some college, 23%, associate degree, 14%. So we're talking about a fairly highly educated workforce, no matter what economic data we're looking at that came out of this survey. Now, highest educational attainment, it's showing the same thing. City of Maricopa, the blue line, starts to get bigger as you move farther, farther to the right with more and more education. So all of this data, and you, you actually feel better about these surveys when, one, you have a large number of people respond. We, we had nearly 500 people respond to the mail-in survey, which is a pretty good turnout. And then there was an online survey that's provided in an appendix to the report that you all have. That's just provided for additional information. It's not as statistically significant because it's an online survey, just getting back to survey, you know, technicality issues, but it supports seen information. So it's another point that backs up the fact that you have a highly educated workforce. Now, length of residency, this is the one that I like a lot. When we did this back in 2009, and then you had another one that was done before that, the length of residency was very short. And so the people here had houses. Now they have homes. They're part of the community. And I think that's one of the things that you need when you start getting cooperation and consensus among the community, and you can actually put forward economic development programs that are gonna specifically influence the community as a whole. So I actually real, I put a lot of weight on this particular one because some of economic development is the recruiting, providing the tools, and a lot of it is having community support. So there are some political issues going along as well. But I like the fact that people are feeling more attached to their community because now they've been here longer. Distribution by previous residents, out of state, 47%. That's pretty consistent with some of the faster-growing communities. But you can see that the ones that posted the higher percentages are the ones in the East Valley. So there's a very tight connection. Even though Maricopa's in Pinal, and a lot of economic developers don't pay attention to that, they look at Maricopa being outside of greater Phoenix. Greater Phoenix includes Pinal, but they think of greater Phoenix more as Maricopa County. It's very tightly tied, and you'll see that in some of the other statistics, to the East Valley primarily. The, the sectors where you're seeing the reported employment, education and government, because of the way the survey works and the economic data, some of the education data goes into government and back and forth, so you kind of have to look at those in the aggregate. But finance, insurance, and professional services, higher value added. Manufacturing, higher value added. Medical health care, higher value added. So this is another supporting slide. You're looking at higher incomes and higher value-added industries, higher education levels. That's something that you can really use going forward. In terms of the mix, this is the industry mix of the, the people that responded to the survey. City of Maricopa, if you want to compare it to greater Phoenix, the one that I want to point out right now, manufacturing, 13% versus 7.4 for greater Phoenix as a whole. Higher value-added industries disproportionately in some of these industries, doing quite well. This stuff is gonna be really easy to promote, not only from talking about Maricopa's role within the greater Phoenix area as a whole, so you get, get more attention paid to it, but also in your business recruiting and everything else. This is where the city residents work, surprisingly, but not surprisingly, Chandler, 22%. Usually you see the city that you're looking at being the number one, but this is good. The people that are, that are leaving are actually going, and they're doing the engineering work in Chandler and Tempe and some of the East Valley communities. Now, what we would like to see over the longer term is that these individuals will have those jobs locally. Now, it's gonna take a long time to do that, but you have to work on that on a regular basis diligently over time. We had to show household data if you want to compare it to the other counties, but this is really the workforce configuration that you want to promote. The range of salary, it's very similar to the household data, but it's a little bit more disproportionate on the higher end. Again, Again, high numbers, 50,000 and up. This is really good, this is really good data for the Greater Phoenix region. Have you already looked for a job closer to home? 61% said yes. If you're looking, if you're currently commuting outside the area, would you accept a comparable job closer to your home? Eighty-five percent said yes. I don't know why anybody said no, but you would have expected that to be a high number. Would you consider changing careers? Like I mentioned, 44% said yes. And even though that's not the lion's share, that's still a pretty impressive statistic. I think that really speaks to your community, because the number-one thing that a person has to think about is putting food on his family's table. And in this case, they're willing to take a risk and change careers. If they can feel, if they can feel like they can have a longer-term career within your particular community, this number's going to go up and up. If we did this survey in five years, I bet you it's going to be 50 or 60. And then finally, I think this is the last one. Do you think that business recruitment is important? Again, it's one of those no-brainers, but I think that sometimes you have to demonstrate this, that the community as a whole is behind economic development. It's behind, it's probably behind smart economic development, the way that economic development within Arizona has been progressing. It went from, not that many years ago, a lot of communities just competing for retail jobs and not being very competitive across the country, to really competing for higher value-added jobs. So how does Maricopa fit that niche going forward? And then how do you expand that take, that capture rate, as you progress through the years? You have, again, you have the, you have outstanding staff, you have the right workforce tools. I think you just maybe need to, you know, talk about rounding out the overall toolbox going forward. But if staff and the policymakers have the right tools, I see things going in the right direction. So this is one of those communities where I go in, I wasn't expecting as much, but it continues to impress me going forward. It's a lot more difficult to give this presentation when I go into it, and I have to tell somebody, you've got some problems, your policymakers are terrible, and your staff don't know how to add to and to. That's not the situation here. So, and I joke, but I don't joke. I mean, you know what I'm talking about. This is how the survey results compare, 2009 versus 2013. It's all pretty comparable. The main discrepancy is of those working outside Maricopa, saw a local job, 2013, 61%. It was only 47% back in 2009. We didn't have the full impact of the economic downturn. The downturn started in 2007. We've been in recovery for a long time. But the way this downturn worked is that the recession was over, but the worst was still in front of us afterwards. So I think that this data is probably a little bit more reflective of the community than even it was back in 2009. And the length of residency, five years or more, 77% in 2013, only 19% in 2009. And that's where I talk about, back then, people just had a house. Now they actually have a home, and they're part of the community. And so everything's moving in the right direction. I'm not really seeing anything that I'm worried about over the long run. You still have a lot to overcome, but everybody has a lot to overcome after this particular downturn. Final note, this is one of the best economic assets that you have. Continue to promote it, but then also try to round out that economic toolbox that you have locally, and continue to work with the state and other economic development agencies. I really like seeing the cohesiveness and the community spirit, what I saw earlier here. Once you have that, I think that's hard to achieve. You're already working with the state. I think the state as a whole is moving in the right direction, and you all are moving in the right direction as well. So I'm very optimistic. I think the future is very bright for you. And that's it. Any questions? Hold up the beach ball if you have any, and I'll...
I knew you'd already answered pretty much my question here, but, you know, again, just for synopsis, and for good measure for the people in the audience, again, you know, the benefit of this survey is what? I mean, obviously, we have an incubator here, we have small business, you know, we have city investment, and we focus on retention. And I've already had an experience with using this in our bond rating agencies, you know, in that trip that we took, and using this to express, hey, look, here's a very qualified, you know, group of people that have said, you know, as a third party, hey, this is what's going on in Maricopa, it's a happening place. So again, kind of elaborate on that if you wouldn't mind.
Well, think about what goes into an economic toolbox. You have, do people want to locate here? Do businesses want to locate here? Do you have a way of recruiting? Do you have a way of growing from within? Do you have the supporting workforce? The most difficult one to provide when you're doing some of this outreach is a qualified workforce. That's something that takes a while to develop usually. That's something that we're still trying to work on at the state level. It's going to take years and years of working hard to improve that. You have one of the more difficult ones in your toolbox already. So the tough stuff, I feel like you already have. You just need to maybe round it out with some of the smaller items as you do your recruiting. But a lot of that, a lot of that involves trying to figure out what an individual needs, and then you try to work with them, and you have to kind of tailor make, you have to do a tailor-made proposal for them. But this is something that not every community has. This is something that you can brag about, that other communities are going to need to spend a decade trying to develop.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any other questions? Thank you again. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Micah?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Moving forward, as I stated earlier, we're going to begin actively promoting this through our site selection database and relationships. So moving forward, appreciate your support and getting the word out on Maricopa's very qualified labor force. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We need a motion to approve this.
Can you move to accept this report?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Onto item 10.5. We're going to discuss and possibly take action on awarding a contract to Oakland Construction for design-build pre-construction services for the Public Works Fleet and Fire Administration project. Brad?
Thank you, Mayor Price. Counsel, yeah, before you is a contract award for design-build services for our, for a new Public Works Fleet and Fire Administration facility, so all three functions. The project will be located just west of the new fire station, the Dawn Pierce Fire Station in the Estreagin site. And design-build services, I think you're probably all pretty familiar with now. It encompasses the entire project from design through construction. Before you today is strictly pre-construction, which is design, programming, and then as well as construction administration, which is the design professionals' part with construction. So it encompasses all of that, all of the professional services. We had a six-panel, or a six-member panel committee picking it. We had a, I think this project, it was the most proposals that we've seen on all of the recent projects. I think it was, I think it ended up being 19 proposals we had to review. So we had, it was a tough selection, but I think we did, we did good with what, you know, ended up being the top, the top team. So I'll answer any questions.
Any questions, Counsel?
Mayor?
Yes. Counselor.
Reading through the record of Oakland Construction and their bios, and I was quite impressed with what they brought to the table. I know you had to go through, you said it was a tough call, so the candidates, other candidates, I'm sure there was also highly qualified. So, thank you, and them knowing, knowing the city. I think that was the basis of it, as I was reading through it. They assigned people who were knowing Maricopa, what is Maricopa about, and they're involved with the construction of the new city hall and with other projects going on. So I was very impressed with that, and I think it was good work with the team. So with that, I move to approve on 10.5.
Have a motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And then finally, item 10.6. The Mayor and City Council shall discuss and possibly take action on adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014. Tom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Very pleased to end the meeting tonight with the, what you have before you, the fiscal 13, 14 tentative budget adoption. I will hit it at a very high level. Counsel, BFO subcommittee members have seen the information multiple times. It is a very transparent process. We've vetted a lot of information, and now what we do is bring it before you for tentative budget adoption. Quick overview, as you know, the operating budget and the CIP or capital projects budget kind of go forward on two different tracks. Tonight's really the first time where we bring the two together to bring before you a total budget request of $186 million, 51 million, approximately 52 million operating budget, and 134 million in capital projects budget. General fund makes up the largest piece of the operating budget, $30.8 million. That particular number does include $2 million in contingency, followed by the grants fund at 13, debt service at 4.5, the newly-created Copper Sky Recreational Fund, 1.9, and our Highway User Revenue Fund, the operating side of the Highway User Revenue Fund of 1.5 million. You can see here the CIP, clearly the largest fund within the CIP is the grants CIP. What we have before you tonight includes a request to appropriate approximately $62 million. What this does is allow for the city to proceed forward with the Tiger V application on the grade separation project. As Counsel knows, anything that we appropriate in the grants fund, we don't spend unless we are successful at the grants, but we do have to appropriate that. Couple other highlights, the general governmental CIP, $24 million. Primarily, what we have there is the completion of the city hall and police project and the police substation project that will be down at the Copper Sky Recreational Facility. One other, one other item to note, Parks Bond Fund, that is the completion of the Copper Sky Recreational Complex. And what we're, what we're for you tonight is to appropriate, or to tentatively approve, approximately $25 million in that particular fund. Actions to date, as Counsel knows and staff knows, it's a very lengthy process. It's a very detailed process. It's a very transparent process. We begin in January, and tonight before you on May 7th is tentative budget adoption. It goes through several levels of review, and it is, again, a transparent process. The CIP budget actually begins a little bit before the operating. We kick that off in December. It goes through a city manager review. We bring before you a 10-year CIP draft. We adopt the 10-year CIP. And then again, tonight, we merge the two together in the tentative budget adoption. Quick overview, we kick off the budget processes, and this is real important, and this was kind of a selling point for the bond raters. We do a mid-year budget update. That's a forecast. That is, I can't overemphasize the importance of that process. And basically, what that does is say, where are we going to be, where are we forecasted to be five years from now? Based on that, we begin our budget development process. We do have a zero-based budget process. Every line item is reviewed. The Mayor and Counsel are very familiar with the detail that they get at the BFO subcommittee level and at the council retreat. The request, or the tentative budget we have before you tonight, does have planned expenditures in excess of revenues of about $513,000. This is, what we're trying to do is bridge the gap into what we anticipate to be the economic recovery, why the economic recovery takes hold. Can we do this? Absolutely. The Counsel, past Counsels have had the wherewithal to basically set aside $20 million, and that's, that acts as the city's savings account. What that does is give us flexibility. It gives us flexibility to adopt this budget and not have to make drastic changes if economic conditions change. This request also creates the Copper Sky Recreational Fund, and that is what we call a special revenue fund, and that will only account for activities of that particular complex starting in fiscal 13, 14. Quick revenue highlights, this tentative budget proposes no increase in the primary property tax levy. It does, we do see increases in state shared revenues, and that really is indicative of the, of the, what I coin as a slight recovery in state shared sales tax, state shared income taxes, and we're realizing those increases in this budget. It assumes stable sales tax revenues. It also assumes, and this is important, no impact to construction transaction privilege tax or TPT revenues. As the Mayor alluded to earlier, that's still on the table. This assumes status quo. If that condition changes, then we have some work to do in the upcoming years. Any impact of that will not affect fiscal 13, 14 going forward tonight. It does anticipate continued reduction in primary property tax revenue. That is the constitutional limit that our residents have reached, and we conservatively estimate our primary property tax revenues in our general fund. Just a quick snapshot of the levy. Again, the primary levy, which is the general fund, does not include an increase to the levy. We are, by statute, allowed to increase our levy 2%. We're not proposing that this fiscal year. This will be the third consecutive year where that is really the situation, where the primary levy is held constant. If you go down to the primary levy line, you'll see that the total levy increases slightly. What that is, that's basically the value of the new construction on our tax rolls. So again, the primary levy is not being increased with this tentative budget adoption. Secondary levy is being increased, and we've had multiple discussions on going out, going to the bond market, and for the completion of the Copper Sky Recreational Complex. And we are set to structure our debt service repayments around $1.76. And we, basically, that $1.76 per $100,000 in assessed valuation hasn't changed when first presented, I believe, back in the fall.
And Tom, just for clarification on these, again, for the audience, again, the rates can float, but the levy is the money actually realized by the city that is brought in. So even though the rate changes here on primary and secondary, but let's focus on primary here, that it's the levy that stays the same, right? Because it's, because, well, I say focus on the primary because that's something that we set. We don't set the rate. We could, but we're saying that the levy is the amount that's being brought in, and it's virtually the same minus additional construction, or adding additional construction. So the secondary, though, is the Copper Sky for the bonds. So that's what the voters said to do.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Counsel, that's exactly correct. If the home values doubled, the levy would be the same.
But the rate would be decreased.
Yeah, and in order to get there, you, the rate is the result, the result of that equation.
Okay.
Thank you. Quick snapshot, there's the 513 we were talking about. I'm now into the general fund. Again, it doesn't include the contingency fund, which any contingency items are brought before this council for formal approval. Real quick, I'll hit this very briefly. CIP budget overview, again, we brought it forward in the 10-year CIP plan. We have clearly identified funding sources for some major projects, most notably the Copper Sky Recreational Complex, the Police Department Substation located within the park, Public Works Maintenance and Fire Admin Facility, and the City Hall and Police Station. These are, these are big projects, and they're many projects, and really, staff should be commended on the ability to manage and deliver these projects. And finally, on CIP, the request again appropriates $62 million for Tiger V, for the intent-to-seek grant funding for the State Route 347 grade separation. And before I conclude, just a quick thanks to Mayor and Counsel during this process, a quick thanks to staff up here who put countless, countless hours in this, and everybody came to the table, everybody contributed, everybody understood the issues. Special thanks to Assistant City Manager Casey and City Manager Fisher. They volunteered to run this process next year. And they are, they are absolutely capable of doing that. What really, what I enjoy the most is basically being able to step back and hear someone else explain the nuances of this process, and they can absolutely do that, and we're very fortunate for that. Real quick, next steps, June 4th, final budget adoption. We have a process where we have to go and advertise our, the documents that you have in your packet tonight, and then we'll come back to Counsel June 18th. And then we'll come back to council June 18th for the property tax levy adoption. And with that, I'd be more than happy to take questions and again, thank you very much.
Counsel, any questions? Nope. Thank you again to staff and to you, Tom. This has been indeed a very lengthy process with a lot of review, a lot of penny pinching. So I think this is about as good as it can get and we really appreciate it. So thank you very much. With that, I would accept a motion.
So moved and thanks to the BFO committee too for all the hours spent on that.
We have a motion and a second? Have a second? Great, motion and a second. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for attending tonight. I know it was rather festive. We appreciate it. We'll have somewhat more on the decorum next time, but we appreciate your tolerance this time. And with that, can I have a motion to move to each session? Have a motion and a second? Second? Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.